We're gonna get started if everyone wants to stand, Mr. Dent, please.
Father and Heavens, we thank you right now for your goodness, bless your name, Father, we thank you. Thank you as well as we all, Father, we pray that man take care of you, he will be glad. Of course, from you can you will be able to, we thank you now, but it's done just. These blessing, our Lord, bless you asking these men.
I declare the ladies, this is why I would manage to America and to the Republic of which it stands one nation, and we are in this world, and we will be together forever.
Welcome, maybe one or two other, please, workshop. The school day, July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, nine A M. The conference line set up number is one nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two. Access code is three two three four seven pound. This is not a toll free number, you may be subject to long list and charges according to your long list and plan. Chair person, I have the biggest public comment, please follow the rules for us. You wish to speak, please dial star five. The moderator will get your line when it's your turn to speak, notify you by nine o'clock. Please announce your name and address, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. The comment, they always be one sign for each agenda item.
All right. That said. Little sorry to talk. Good time.
So really quick, well, I'll just review the changes that were talked about last Monday. So I was asked to calculate increases if we gave an additional fifty cents, two dollars and a half, an additional dollar if we gave two. The county attorney, an increase in his retainer to fourteen thousand, an increase of fourteen thousand per year, and then his hourly from a hundred dollars per hour to a hundred and seventy per hour, which is a total increase of twenty-two thousand five hundred. The way that I calculated his hourly increase was I took fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-two, and then what we've spent year to date for twenty-three and got an average, and that ended up being, I think, like eighty-five hundred dollars. And so that's how I calculated the increase for him. And then it was decided by the board to give the sheriff of D M H the additional twenty-five percent allocation from the small county surtax, which will reduce the reserve in that fund from two point two million to nine hundred and sixty-two thousand. It does not change the overall total budget amount, just the reserve amount. It was also decided to, for the county to match the softball field grant of two hundred and eighty-three thousand. That will increase the total general fund budget, it reduces the reserve for capital improvements, and also the same for the Shady Grove basketball court of forty-two thousand forty dollars. And so that is, are the changes from last week. And then that takes us to the next page. And so there are two columns. One is for the fifty cent addition and one is for the dollar. And so in the general fund, there is an excess of nine sixty-four eight hundred. So I took what the increase of the fifty cent would be in the first column. An additional fifty cent would be the two twenty-three one fifty-three, and then the dollar would be the four forty-six three oh three, and then the minimum wage, and then the addition amount, the additional amount of the attorney. And then by giving the fifty cent or the dollar, that changes that department transfer, which is the estimate for the city calls for county fire and purchasing, no, sorry, county attorney, or the start over, the engineer, sorry. And so that would leave an excess in the general fund of six hundred and seventy-three thousand sixty-six dollars if we gave an additional fifty cent, and an excess in the general fund of four hundred and three thousand eight thirty-five if we gave an additional dollar, because the first dollar is already included in the budget request. And so moving down to road bridge, the additional fifty cent increase would cost the thirty-seven six twenty-one. The additional dollar would cost seventy-five. That would be funded with an additional amount of the transfer from secondary M S T U. There would still be an excess of seventy thousand seven twenty-four if it was fifty cent, and there would be an excess of twenty-four thousand two eighty-four if there was an additional dollar. Solid waste, there would be an excess of twenty-seven thousand four ninety-two if there was an additional fifty cent, and two thousand six fifty-eight if there was a dollar. And then moving down, and the same for airport land ownership and airport enterprise. That should be amounts of what the increase is and what it costs. And then that's all I have. So then whatever y'all wanted to discuss, any questions that y'all have?
No, but I reckon day is decision-making time on these.
Sure.
Is the day of decision-making time?
Next Sunday is the special meeting to set the intended mileage. And so once that mileage rate is set, then at the public hearings in September, you can keep it the same or go lower, you can all go higher. Yes, next Monday.
There you go.
Monday at nine.
I had, I did just have a couple of items I wanted to bring up. Mr. Lou, I know you were talking about the fire stations, the, maybe there was a reserve fund, we was talking about trying to, go ahead, well, I think it was the first year into the grant appropriations throughout the state for maybe steam hatch fire. And I think we already, what are we like in year three?
No, we're in year four, I believe, for floor station two.
Station two.
So one approach.
Well, instead of taking the, and depleting, almost depleting those reserves, I think we probably discussed, would we be opposed to, you know, we still got time on the steam hatch fire, I mean, I understand there's an issue down there, but what's another year gonna hurt versus depleting the funds out of the issue? Maybe let's go and try to get it through the next appropriation. And if we don't get it, then the next budget year, we may need to look at going ahead and doing something or not, certainly not wait till the last hour, but would anyone be opposed to potentially not doing that, not depleting the funds out for that station and kind of let this?
Well, I don't, I don't know.
What the car could say, and I think that's two different categories, isn't that what it was saying? So this was from the one cent sales money?
So the funds to complete the station tube station, we budgeted from M S T U reserves. So there is a remaining amount of nine sixty, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand.
That's where the money would come from, I guess, those people.
Well, not necessarily, it could come from the image, from the one cent sales tax reserves as well.
That's what the car was saying, is that you still have the reserves, even by, by the files, you know, funded to deal with station two.
Right.
And that's why I'm saying it would make sense if we know that we have that need for priorities in Hatchie, that we would go ahead and invest. Because in reality, it comes back to, you know, we're looking to try and understand, and we requested two million dollars for the appropriation, but that amount could be less or lesser of the two. And so if it is, then, you know, my thought is, we know we have the need for flooding down there. It's ongoing as it's falling out of the clouds. And so it just seems like a wise decision in my mind to utilize that excess as investing into this type of infrastructure.
And I don't disagree, my only concern is that I don't, we have not received a proposal in several years for, for building a fire station, and so I really have no idea what those proposals, a design build would come in at. I mean, we have budgeted, I think, a little over one point two million dollars at this point, but I don't know if that will be sufficient. So that's, that's my only concern about trying to earmark money funds now, because I, I mean, the funds will still be there when we get the contract, and then when we get the proposals, we'll know how much they are, and, and then you can discuss it at that time. I just, I have no idea what those proposals are going to come in at.
Either way, I mean, the fire station's coming, I just, I just was, I was just, or a new station's coming to fix that problem down there. I was just, you know, proposing, didn't, if that was gonna hurt us in any kind of way, or put us in a potential bind of, of being short on, you know, overflow money, that maybe we'd wait, but, I mean, like I say, if it's, if we're good to stay the course, and it's not gonna hurt us in any kind of way, then I'm I don't have a problem, I just wanted to bring that part up, that if we could wait the following year, but that it, it, being we're the first year into it, then so be it, but if it's, like I say, the station's coming anyways, but if it's not gonna hurt us, then maybe we move on after we discuss. I just don't know the way you would, that sounds like you're saying, we, we're just not knowing where the bids, the updated bids are gonna come in.
For station two.
We don't necessarily know unless even about that.
Correct, that's my only concern, because we budgeted, like I said, around one point two million, and I don't, I don't know if that's sufficient.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, we based that upon the last proposal, which was several years ago.
It wasn't a cost, what would we do, what are we gonna do, are we gonna have to come back and?
We'll have to, we'll have to ask for a transfer from reserves to, to complete the station. But then I think we'll have a little better idea of construction costs, and maybe we can plan better for the remaining two stations. And yes, we can always go back and request additional funding to complete the other two stations, the Shady Grove and the Steam Hatchie station, next year. And if we know that, you know, the, that will, that one million dollars is about where, you know, what we'll receive, I don't know if we'll be successful next year or not, but that gives us a target.
Next year, we need to ask for a lot.
There it is.
So anyway, so we just want to stay the course, we're kind of where we were. I think we can, I mean, I think you have additional funding if necessary, you know, regards to station two, and so we were discussing, the part was this, so one second. I don't think those two would compete. And again, you know, I think, I think there's sufficient revenues available, though. I'd listen to other board members, but we know there's a flooding issue in Steam Hatchie, it's been ongoing down there, and we're gonna staff it, so it's out.
My question is, do we need to build it back in the same spot?
Well, I mean, so the proposal was that we would elevate that site.
Right.
Have retention on, on, you know, the same acreage area footage, and that way you could could somewhat transition some of those issues that are there and have elevation. So you'd have, if I didn't, if I'm not misunderstanding, from what I saw there from the fire chief, is that there will be a designated retention with elevation to, to direct and channel some of that concern there. And I don't know if we have another site that we can locate at this point.
Well.
We don't have a lot of property in Steam Hatchie, a lot of county property.
But if I was to build, would be a, anywhere on that street, I would have an idea of far to have, if you're, play directions, you know. But I'm like you, there's a lot of, a lot of tax places down there, the buildings are pretty much, I feel like the tax revenue that we, that comes in, I mean, that's, you know, all the new stuff to be built down there, that ends on fire truck, I think we need to put that on top of the list to do when we can, you know, I mean, that just, people know he can tell you from straight, that there's a lot of revenue comes in from down there, tax wise, and the people down there moving in there and buying and building new stuff all the time, and it'd be, I mean, it'd be a plus for them.
Well, it's, yeah, certainly a great improvement on the infrastructure, given the growth and the demands that come with that.
We can get by for a year with the, with the way it is, I'm fine with that if you run with it, I mean, that's your area.
Well, I mean, my thing is, if we got the funds that we can utilize there, I mean, let's, let's see what the costs are. And we come to that place, and, you know, we also have decisions to make, but I mean, I think, I think it's a good condition to be in, in respect of having the funding that we were speaking with, with the flood, and so, I mean, it's, it's not a real difficult decision in, in respect to, if, you know, if, if we come back to a place and it's like, well, you know, it's not two million dollars, it's two and a half million dollars, well, that's a little different consideration. But I mean, if we come to understand that with the appropriation that we've gotten, you know, if it's, if it's five hundred thousand dollars extra, that's, that's doable within the funds that we discussed. So that's why, you know, to me, it makes sense, if we're talking from two different directions, that we're able to deal with the, the need with station two, but that we can also start moving forward in construction with station, station seven. I think it would be wise, and certainly the needs are apparent down there, so I would like to see us to be able to move forward, you know, through this year, given the availability of the funding.
Things not gonna go down material-wise, I'm sure, you know, I would love.
Well, I mean, part of, part of the cost on that renovation is, you know, the elevating of that site. So how much is that, is there any wiggle room with that as far as costs or things that we could do to minimize those impacts on that budget? I think is the sixty-four thousand dollar question, so.
Are you?
I don't know what that is, but I know that, you know, there, there is the potential, because it's not just all building, the building costs, but that part of the project is, is to elevate and, and try to deal with the flooding concern.
So are you, are you thinking utilizing road bridge funding or secondary road paving for that portion of the project?
If that helps offset those costs, I mean, I'm open to all options. I'm just trying to see and understand, is, is that the, the proper path to move forward? I'm not saying that it is.
My budget's so tight. I mean, I don't think within the operational budget, and you would almost have to go, and then the common account, we already know is going to be reduced a little bit by employee pay raises, if that's what the board decides. So I guess I, we would have to look and see how much that is. Are you, are you thinking using your district funds for that portion of the project?
I'm open to all options. I'm not gonna take any of them off the top, I just want, I want to be able to go forward with, with the improvement on this piece of infrastructure.
That's, that's your tax.
If that's necessary.
I don't know that.
Look, I mean, I, I think we're kind of getting the cart ahead of the horse, because we just, we still don't know, that there may be sufficient one cent money there to, to deal with it. You know, so I'm willing to commit to that measure if that be the case, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't know that we can use that, that revenue source for a construction project.
And that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, that would, I don't believe we can do that, but, and even if, I don't, I don't think we can do that, but we.
It's probably a district fund, the road, yeah.
Yeah, that really is, those are restricted to actual.
And that's fine, I mean, what I'm saying is, within the scope of this project, but there, there are some, some uncertainties that
Oh, absolutely.
that may, you know, have a great impact on reducing those costs. It's not all red iron and building and labor costs, but that, if, if we look at the, just the fill and the elevation with the retention pump, you know, we may have figured that it's gonna take three hundred hours, or, I mean, what I'm saying is, there may be some flexibility in that scope that says, well, we can really reduce it because we, we don't have to haul it this far, we can bring it from here. Those are different things that we may have said, if it be fuel costs, that, that aren't steady or the same as they were when we put it into the request.
If you have a figure, I mean, loads is gonna take, it elevates necessarily where it needs to be.
Right.
And then you have to figure how much you're gonna take out of the retention pump, how many loads that is, how many cubic yards, and that give you an idea of where it's going. That's not gonna haul in the dirt, it's not gonna dig it, it's not gonna get any cheaper than it is, the way everything is going.
Right, I don't, I don't know, where did, so, where do we figure where we're gonna haul that field from? Or we're gonna haul it from, you know, way off, and we figure it was ten miles, so I'm saying those things are still
Up in the air.
you know, to be determined. So, so, again, I don't think it's, you know, three thousand yards is gonna come out of the retention pump, so, I mean, you can gain some by utilizing that on the side, but I do think that there's gonna have to be some material volume. How much, I, I didn't see those kind of figures, but I, I think those unknowns are significant enough that, you know, we, we may very well have the funds to deal with.
So what were the, is it that, when we get closer to it?
So we just, so if anything wrong, just stay the course as discussed, and once the updated revised pricing comes in, we can always
We'll have a better idea then.
redirect wherever we need, if we didn't, if that wasn't the right path to go, we can always redirect to a different path.
Right. So Mr. Chair, we got three fire stations we're talking about, we're talking about Isco.
Isco.
We almost got that one under control, that we gonna do that this year?
If we move forward, we should, we should be okay.
Okay, and then the next two are the Steam Hatchie and the Shady Grove. And I thought there we got on with that, nothing but.
Well, we don't even have a contract, we don't even have an agreement for those yet. So we were just notified that we received through legislative appropriations a million dollars for each station. Now, at the first meeting in August, I believe, we should finalize the, the land track, the purchase of the property, the exchange, and then at least we'll have to secure the land for that station.
Remember that we're talking about racing the building down that way, those, the, that's the E M Ts and firemen are dead all the time right now, that particular place.
Yes.
Where would you go when you're trying to build that, where would the people go until you get it built?
So I mean, you know, you'd have to ask a tentative structure there in respect to how long it would take to, to move that elevation and, and at the same time. So I'm certain that the fire chief has a plan for a tentative, short-term, let's say, position while that type construction was taking place, but I would expect that that would be minimal. You know, it may be something that, that, not trying, you know, maybe we, we work on the sheriff's substation down there.
I don't know that that's necessary.
I'm not sure that the times are expensive, but if it were something that's necessary, I don't, I don't believe it's gonna interrupt the service, I say that.
They got room there, substation for Sheriff Department, Department of Fire Department.
If it was necessary, I would.
And that could get in my office, that wouldn't get in place, Cleveland would let.
Right, just a short-term location, if it was necessary to keep the service in place. And I'm certain that fire chief could speak greater to that. It's not to interrupt the service while the construction is taking place, it would, it would still be expensive. But yes, sir, that, that would include, you know, the, the E M Ts that are stationed down there as well as our, our fire departments, so.
You can be talking around down there with the construction people, that the field dirt, that's down there, and kind of have an idea if they've got a more fit, they can get dirt from, how much, just get a ball bigger, how much it cost a yard, and, and how much it costs from their market to the site, and that kind of stuff, give you an idea when we do get to that point, you, you try to get a you know you didn't have to hold compared to anything.
No, I mean, you, you know, I just, I don't know when, when the proposal was put together, what, what the exact terms were, you know, where we saying a hundred loads of dirt, you know, from a location that's really twice as far away, so you're talking twice the sunk costs with transport, such as that. I, I just don't know exactly what components were used to build it, so if we said, you know, you, you cut those costs, the transport costs in half, that could be pretty substantial, depending on how many loads of dirt, so.
There should be, there should be some
Flexibility.
flexibility down there from one side of the river to the other, might have to come out, you got some deal there.
Depending on the contractor, I, I mean, I think that's certainly doable, and I'd be more than glad to try to get some, some ballpark prices.
Give you some ideas, work, work on that.
And try to talk with the chief to see, you know, if he has an idea, how many yards, you know, with what kind of elevation it was to be able to tell those folks, hey, it's that number of yards, you know, do you have something close?
When we get much closer to that stage, we'll, we'll, we'll know our options.
Yeah, let's stay the course.
Lou, stay the course, and we can revisit. Good files come in.
And I did, we, we discussed the senior center, and did really good, really good, I knew those folks were trying to, you know, and we do money such as that, but these entities are, are to provide an itemized statement of where the money went, and I understood the senior center's not been good at that in the past. But, you know, we have, you know, spoken in detail, and I, I met with the senior center, and I've spoken on this before, that you know, this senior center, for these seniors that is out like our sports complex, and where all these, our young youth go and play ball, pickleball, softball, baseball, whatever, and I feel like we do need to help to some degree, whether it's twenty-five, I know Commissioner Feigle had mentioned, you know, we do twenty-five thousand dollars, and, you know, guard the city to kind of, do, you know, follow our lead and do the same to help out the senior center. So I'm not opposed to doing just that for a year, the first year, and require them to bring an itemized statement at the end of the year of what they did, what the funds were
Used for.
used for, and if they don't bring an itemized statement of what the funds were used for, because the funds may not be available, because it, obviously, it could just look reckless, but maybe not.
So Danielle, the, so four H Foundation provides a minimal audit, correct, is, with a financial statement?
Is that what you're, you want a professionally prepared financial statement? That's what we require from the four H Foundation, not just the summation of what was expended.
Whether it is a submission for what any other entity have to do for us, then that's.
That's what four H does, they get a little less than eleven thousand dollars, and that's what they provide, because of the amount of money that it is and that it costs, I mean, that would take up a lot of what they get. And so they get, they submit a financial statement type thing.
I would follow that saying.
Do you recall what they said that cost them? I mean, it, it, it's going to take part of their allocation. So at least thousands of dollars, I would think.
Not, not that much.
I mean, I would think it would be less than two.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think it would be less than two.
They would just need to understand that a ballpark cost that they need to make sure they are allocating. If we do this, then they do need to make sure that there's a ballpark cost of.
Accountability or accountability.
Yes. Well, they, they need to account for, they're in that money. They need to be able to, to pay for an audit that's, we figure. A ballpark cost can be, remember that.
I would like, I know commissioner Fiegel, I would too, because anytime you go spending taxpayers' money they want. The, the taxpayers can ask for it. And we need to be able to satisfy ourselves to be doing the right thing, the right thing with it.
They can supply a question for audit. Wants the money that is expended at the end of the year, then, then I'll be available to follow.
Let's see the city of Perry set us in place and do their part too. I mean, that's what, I mean, we have no control over that, but we, that's something I believe they can, they can work with some. We call it a little bit every, people from county and city area, use it every day, you know.
We're going to see if we can obtain a cost for that. From, um, county extension. Do you want to go ahead and decide? I mean, do you want to go ahead and move forward with it regardless? I mean, because they can either accept it or not accept it.
I mean, talk about the senior.
We can, yeah, so that I can.
Accept it, but I mean, yeah, for me, I do want to move forward. I would like to go ahead and move forward. I mean, that's for me, obviously, for the commissioner's ear.
What source will be the funding for the, what will get the funding?
On the general fund.
Where?
It would come out of the general fund.
Sound like a one of the meeting, hey.
But you currently have, even if you move forward, but up to the two dollar increase for employees, there's still an excess.
Four hundred and three thousand.
At the current mileage rate.
So I was really going to talk about, about what you're hearing this minute, so. But for me, I'm good, I'm okay to move forward unless anyone opposes, then I would, I would say move forward with that, with senior share.
How much? I, I do have one more thing that I didn't mention last week. Um, emergency management, their local match, um, is an average of three years. So their request is what we gave them for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. So by statute, we give them an average of three years. He's requesting an additional amount. Um, so the three-year average is forty-nine thousand five twenty-nine, so five thirty. He's asking for sixty thousand for twenty twenty-four. Um, stating that it is due to the increase in management and overall cost increase, increases. I only budgeted the three-year average based on statute. Um, and then I forgot to mention it last Monday. You said that is on me. I'm sorry. So that is an additional ten thousand four hundred and seventy thousand. That is up to you whether or not you want to increase it with keeping in mind that if you do the sixty thousand for twenty twenty-four. Then that would be a part of the three-year average for twenty twenty-five. And then moving forward, that sixty would be a part of the three-year average. So it would go up.
So you can't just increase it for one year?
You can't just increase it for one year. It would, that amount would then be part of that average. That's why I didn't put it in there and leave that to the board.
Did he say, did he include specifically what that was for?
He just said it was due to the increase in management and overall cost increases. Over the past year, this department has drastically increased the disaster and emergency response capabilities to the citizens of Taylor County. I just call it.
I'm right here. Paying, so I mean, that's what.
I'm not sure. And I don't believe that his, have the grant, have the grants himself increased amounts? I don't, I don't see that.
He found this on the board. There's an increase. I mean, I, I do actually agree with the presence and I know there, there's a number. Respect to inflation and how everything else is, is underized. I'm not saying that. I don't know about this, it's, it's a right to have, but I do know in my direction certainly on the coast and, and how. They're continuing to seek to respond to those needs down there and all folks that are in those areas. So. Say, how that can be ignored, uh, the trial management.
You told me the management shelter, you told me about Jacob.
I'm just waiting for his response.
Ten thousand dollars more per year, that's about.
Would be ten thousand four seventy for twenty twenty-four. And then for the next fiscal year, that sixty would be included in the three-year average. So then it would go up.
Eight hundred dollars a month, increasing.
I give it to him all, but won't tell him.
And that department is funded by two different state grants as well. So this is the match for the E M G or the, the E M P G, I think. And then he has the E M P A grant.
So that would be a ten thousand eight hundred and twenty dollar increase from this fiscal year. Total.
We need to move on that now.
Hold on one second. Mr. Lauk is answering my text.
Well, this is going to be more than a mission. It's a little crazy every courthouse, but. It's trial week.
That's all I ever heard.
Yeah. I don't know if y'all remember the, uh, girl that said, the girl down in steam hatch, she does the trial we got this week.
The cost of the, um, financial audit for 4H. Or the reduced audit for 4H Foundation is around two thousand dollars. And Mr. Lauk, his response is grant funding has not increased in years as with the E M county funding has remained the same three-year average. As you know, everything has gone up and I have added more programs and equipment to support the citizens of the county. So his grant funding has not increased. Bottom line.
Do you want to vote to the emergency manag- management three-year increase?
I'm not opposed to it. And they did say something about, they looking in the future of getting different places. They said something about that building, you know, they mentioned that the other night, please. They said it was leaking or something going on over there.
Emergency management building? Emergency management building?
No, they don't, you know, I'm not sure. I just remember something about, I said something about.
I'm not aware of that.
So emergency management?
Well, they're talking about building another building out there, you know.
Maybe a new one out there where they're at?
Yeah, I don't know where they're at.
Well, there has been discussion of that just because it's, um, it's small for all the functions that go on now. So you've got dispatch there and then, you know, of course, um, the sheriff's office has, um, some different portable setup. You've got this. So when we all get in the E O C, it can be very crowded, but, um, that's just a discussion that's taken place internally.
Yeah. You always have to look forward to it and that's normal.
He comes, voted building another building out there, you know, just recently. I know the reason, they didn't really come up and say the reason was, but it must be just people running.
Well, now remember he did, they did buy the metal storage building.
Right.
And that's been constructed. So is that maybe what you're referring?
He, he said something about, he come in and talked about building another metal building there just recently.
Right. They, they did that.
They got it done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's storage. Yeah. But still the E O C can feel crowded when we're all there. The, the conference room is only so large. And then of course, like I said, dispatch is there now. So, um, it is feeling a little cramped.
So that was a yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that leaves the.
Do you want to have any, your recommendations on the salary? Increases, the minimum wage increase, another dollar built in, and then there's proposals for an additional fifty cents for a dollar fifty. There's a proposal for an additional dollar for two dollars.
I, I tell you what, that was my suggestion about a dollar and a half. What I can understand and figure, sixty dollars a week increase right now would be a great. Great public pocket. Any individual working and he gets sixty dollars more per week, he's not doing bad. And that would be to two hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars there for two weeks and that would be. What is it?
Twelve little things.
And three, two six, two six, two six, two months? Any bet?
I'm fine with that. A dollar and a half a building.
Yeah.
For less than four.
That would help as far as the, the fire rescue or the fire department, but, um, that would put us at fifteen twenty-eight for firefighter E M T. Which is still under some of the surrounding counties, but it's a little bit closer. If you gave the two dollars, it would bring us up to fifteen seventy-eight for firefighter E M T.
Could we, could we get by by doing the two dollars money wise? I mean, what would that count? I know it's going to push pretty close.
So for every, for the general fund, you would still have an excess, for M S T U would still have an excess, and solid waste, you would still have an excess. Um, Riden Bridge would be funded. Uh, it's already funded with the transfer from secondary. It would just take a larger transfer.
Uh, fifty-nine, fifty-nine thousand, what was that? Well, when you're taking that, why do you spend that?
My understanding that if we, so whichever way this goes in consideration to the additional fifty cent or a dollar, there's still a surplus. At six seventy-three or four hundred and three respectively.
Yes, sir. And the general fund and also in the M S T. And then the solid waste.
It just constitutes the, twice the, the transfer of Riden Bridge. From fifty cent to a dollar, obviously there.
So I guess my question would be, is the additional fifty-seven hour for our firefighters? More, uh, competitive in respect to the surrounding areas?
So the numbers that I have, and I apologize, this is from, I think, over the summer when I was asked for this. So currently, um. Currently for Taylor County firefighter E M T is thirteen seventy-eight starting salary, firefighter medic is fourteen sixteen. City of Perry, we all heard, was somewhere around nineteen dollars. Um, city of Madison is thirteen eighteen, so that's lower. Madison County Fire Rescue, a firefighter E M T is at sixteen fifty and a firefighter medic is at eighteen oh five. Jefferson County firefighter E M T is at fifteen, firefighter medic is at eighteen eighty-eight. Um, Dixie County is firefighter E M T is at fifteen, firefighter medic is at sixteen ninety. Twenty County, uh, firefighter E M T is at fifteen fifty, firefighter medic is at seventeen twenty. And McCullough County is fifteen and sixteen forty-nine. So we would be a little, we would be closer. So we would be a little, we would be closer. At with any of those increases, obviously. But right now, except for the city of Madison or, yes, the city of Madison, we're the lowest paid service. And, and obviously that does not take into consideration the other very generous benefits that our employees receive. I think. Maybe what happens is if we, if we have. New hires who are maybe fresh out of school. They may not realize the benefit of family insurance coverage because they do not, you know, they don't have a family. So if, if we are competing with surrounding counties for folks just coming out of school, that's, that's just the reality of it.
And in respect to our other departments. Does this increase make those vacancies, I guess, easier to fill as far as kind of the nature of the level of the.
Yes, sir. I would hope so because. It does seem like our vacancies are more of an issue since the surrounding counties raise their minimum. It, it does seem like these vacancies are. There's a longer time period as far as filling the vacancies than, and I don't have anything to back that up. It's just my recollection.
What was the city of Perry again?
Nineteen, is it nineteen oh two?
I feel like we need to give it much as we can because the city of Perry and all these other numbers need another county. We're gonna keep them.
You would be in favor of an extra dollar. Because that still leaves a surplus.
You know, I use, I use the name of fifty cents, dollars, okay. Now, I, I do know people in Madison County. Surrounding counties, I know what they do. They come in here by the truck, go and work at our facilities. Right now. We might be lacking in that particular area. But I can tell you, you can get on that road out there at four or five o'clock. You can see them leaving town like a couple of quick. So they're working in Taylor County.
Yes, sir.
You know.
Maybe just not for Taylor County.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. And how do we go a dollar an hour? I mean, two dollars an hour. Hey, that's telling, that's in a sick. If we are willing to do what we need to do and we're willing to go to the people that pay taxes and say, look. We got people working for us. We need freedom of rights. We need to do a little bit better about them. And we as the. I suppose the county is looking out for the people that work for.
As long as we give our employees the same rate.
Yeah.
I'm fine with whatever y'all want, but. I sure don't want to put more on one department than another, I think.
Equal rate. Whatever the rate is, it needs to be equal.
It needs to be equal.
Is some of these comparisons with other counties, could this be called other, due to other counties? When the mandate come into place, they went. And we chose to, Taylor chose to do one dollar.
Well, so that mandate was if we were billing. Medicare. I can't remember if it's Medicare or Medicaid. If we were billing, I think it's Medicaid, then, or it may be both. Then by state law, that minimum wage had to go to fifteen dollars an hour. But we do not provide EMS services. So as an example, Century had to raise their minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour because of this mandate. We did not, but for the counties who do perform EMS services, they had to. And I don't know if they have a separate fire department, if they just moved everybody up together. I think we heard that Madison County raised everyone to fifteen dollars an hour. Was it two years ago, maybe? Gary, when this first started?
I don't know about Madison, but I know what color I did. I know what color it did.
I believe Madison did as well.
Do they both provide the EMT service? Do they both were required to?
Yeah, well done that fact.
By the mandate.
Well, Phil and Leon went on all their employees fifteen dollars an hour when that came about, what I heard. Get that. Pretty sure they all went all their employees least paid for fifteen hours.
They did. Their, their, their choice was move. All of those, it wasn't fifteen, to move them up to fifteen and then, and then in the years after that, they've been dealing with compression through the, through a salary-based study. So that's, that's, that's just the way they chose to do it. They are addressing compression now.
And the way we've chosen is to give everybody the same amount each year and that way you're, you're dealing. With both at the same time, basically.
You have compression then.
Not as, I mean, there's still compression, but it's not to the same degree. So as an example, so your lowest paid employees, I believe they've received. Over thirty percent salary increase since the minimum wage mandate went into effect. And the dollar an hour for other employees has been between three and ten percent depending on how much, what their hourly rate is. So everybody gets something, but with giving a dollar an hour or whatever y'all choose to give. It is a greater percentage for those who make the least. So it doesn't deal with compression evenly, but it does, it does. Chip away at it, I guess I'll say. Everyone gets the same. But if you, if you were, you know, maybe a concession worker who was making seven ninety-three or somewhere around there and then all of a sudden you're making ten and eleven dollars an hour. That's a greater percentage. That's a much greater percentage than folks who went from. Ten dollars to eleven dollars. Because they started out lower. So the only way to really effectively address compression is to give everyone the same percentage. Which would be. Maybe not, I don't think it would be affordable.
So if I'm understanding all that, you, what we're doing here, whichever one of these considerations we go to, we're effectively. Seeking to deal with the mandate as well as the issues of our current employees. Let's say simultaneously instead of. One, one category versus the other. So in, in this respect and seeing the affordability of that within this budget. It would appear, you know, that. We could, we could affordably extend a two dollar an hour. Consideration to our employees and still have a surplus. And so we're. In, in the capacity of evaluating what that decision does, it will help us with the issues that we have with our firefighters. We've discussed at length. But it also deals with some of those issues of vacancies that we have in other departments because they're not. Our wages aren't as competitive given. Other actions taken at other times by different entities.
I believe it would help. I will say in the last several months, we have been receiving more applications than we have in quite some time. And I'm not sure of the reason for that. It could be folks moving here from other areas. Maybe folks who are semi-retired and don't wish to work full-time. You know, those, you know, we, we actually have hired mosquito spray drivers. And are, that are, that are not current employees for the first time in quite some time. We have hired more role-offside attendants. So that's been a change. But I, I'm not sure it, I don't, I don't know if that's sustainable or not and it doesn't really address the full-time issues and plus. We have several long-term employees who will be retiring soon. And I am concerned about filling those vacancies at our current pay rate. That may, that may cause some issues. So the more we increase. Our salaries because what we'll do is we'll increase the starting salaries as well, which is what we did last year. So that does make us more competitive.
All, all of this is built into these numbers, I believe.
Yes.
Whether it be starting salaries or current pay rate.
Yes.
The night that Road and Bridge had seventy, if we did, two dollars. Where's that seventy-five thousand? Where's that offset from?
That's out of your transfer from secondary. So it reduces the common account because your transfer is actually less than the estimated revenue?
Is what?
It's actually less. It, your transfer is more than the revenue for secondary for next year. So to balance secondary. It comes from the common account, so the common account is reduced. But the transfer at the end of the fiscal year may not be as much as what I'm estimating it to be, which is what happened in fiscal year twenty-two. So I estimated the transfer, I'd have to look back at like nine something, but the actual transfer was only five hundred thousand. At the end, because I'm transferring at the end of the fiscal year. Once I look at the balance sheet, taking the revenues and the expenses. But to prepare the budget and for it to balance. That's how much the transfer is.
So while we're talking about that, we're probably gonna need to have a workshop on, just on Road and Bridge and gas taxes by itself. Because we definitely don't have to look at it because it's. It's a deteriorating situation there, so. You know, probably pretty soon we will be, we'll be looking at, probably have some kind of workshops to discuss that, see what we can do. In the future about that fund.
And there's actually two revenue sources that you can oppose. One is for infrastructure, for capital, and one is for operations. Which we, you may wish to look at both.
The August, September.
Yeah, because I, we have, we need to look at that because I'm not sure when you have passed that.
I think it's too late at this point to do it in October. You'd have to do it probably January.
Yeah, probably have to.
To make an effective January first statute, you have to levy it before October first, that would miss.
Probably have to take care of it next year so that we can be collecting it in twenty twenty-five.
But that would offset these deficits.
It won't help, you know, it won't completely offset anything.
Well, reduce.
Well, you know, yeah, there's, you know, there's several different. Taxes and they, like she said, they could be used for different things. We'd have to probably do it now so to evaluate and see what we could, you know, what each one will do, so.
We, I think we can impose, or y'all can impose the sixth cent and the ninth cent. And the sixth cent.
Both of those are designated either the capital or operations, second, whichever one.
And they really don't generate as much money as you think that. I was kind of surprised.
Because there's one that you have to share. One would have to, they'd have to be shared with the city based on our formula with the city, which is seventy thirty. So.
Is that translation of the board? What about?
One is, I'd have to re-review the revenues, which by the way, I still don't have by the state. But the last time I checked, which, when I talked to Department of Revenue about what we had, which was in July of twenty twenty-two. The estimate for one was around a hundred and eight thousand and the estimate for the other was around a hundred and seventeen at the time. So it's probably increased since then. But it's still, I mean, it's.
I would add it. We gotta do something because it's, as you can see, it's. So we're gonna have to try to address the team now and see that, see what our options are because it's definitely. You know, everything's increasing in the revenue.
Yeah.
It's really happened, so, I mean, I'm, I'm wondering what our options would be. That's why we need to have a workshop and figure out what all we can do.
I would recommend to see that you're not good indicators. Certainly you see those kinds of things.
And it's, you know, I mean, it's affecting the amount of money that you have left over to, to pay even your districts.
Oh, yeah, it's a compound issue.
So. If we're on salaries, what did we, if we decided two dollars, would we choose? Dollar plus another dollar?
I think so.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, we agree with that. Be two dollars.
Do we want to talk about the TCDA? I know that. So I know that they, I know that, you know, we budgeted a hundred thousand. Somebody did submit their budget and you used a hundred, then I think they came before and they asked.
Twenty-one forty-five.
Anyway, I don't think you guys made a decision on whether to give them an increase or not.
And the board asked me to schedule a, a meeting between the TCDA, the chamber and the board during our. We had a scheduled workshop for tomorrow, but the chamber indicated they were not at a place where they wished to discuss this. At this time. Discuss utilizing Ms. Dawn for any of the administrative duties. So we did not schedule a, a meeting.
Because we're not available to. Try to help meet the TCDA's needs.
Not at this time, not at this time.
If that be the case, that doesn't. Reduce any, any workload or such from the TCDA perspective.
I believe they are going to advertise at least for a temporary. Replacement for their administrative assistant position while they further explore the possibility of hiring an economic development director. I'm not representing the TCDA, of course, but that's my understanding.
But you do be there at the time we have meeting them.
I do. They did not have a forum at the last meeting, so they did not vote on anything. It was just a discussion.
So, I mean, looking at their actuals, it, it does appear that there's gonna be a. Reasonable surplus in their budget current.
They, yes. So they actually have, I want to say around two hundred, no. They quote me on this, around two hundred and forty thousand dollars in reserves. I believe or somewhere around there. Was that the?
They, I got their audit report last week and it'll be on the agenda at, for the first meeting in August. Because I submit that along with their request for their distribution. So they don't get their distribution until they turn in their audit for the previous year. And I'm pretty sure, I haven't reviewed it yet, but I just clicked on that one page and I want to think their reserve was over three hundred.
So, I mean, I, I, the reason I'm, you know, speaking of that is if there's such a surplus in their operations. I don't see how there's a demand for an increase. Of twenty-one thousand dollars. I mean, I, if you're spending the, the budget that you're operating on. And, and you have a minor amount of funding left over. Okay, maybe you have increases in inflation and all those things and I, I, I tried to understand that as they were here, but. To have quite a, quite a surplus in respect to reserves and a request for. Operating expenses. to have quite a, quite a surplus in respect to reserves and a request for operating expenses, it would appear that the, the current funding is still generating a pretty excessive surplus by my accounts. And if my mind's wrong, I'd certainly be glad to have some help.
One time when they sold that building out there, they couldn't spend that money.
And so that part went in their surplus.
I think it went through the surplus.
But, but for years afterwards, and even this year, it looks like they have a pretty hefty excess in their operating expenses.
And that's the question that I have because, you know, when he was here the other day, he said there was a hundred and ten thousand in their reserves, which I think is from the sale of the property. Or I do believe that's reflected in these reports. It may be. That would be my question to him.
I'm gonna have a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
According to the last audit report, and I don't know if it includes a hundred and ten thousand or not, it's two.
He's looking at it. I, I want to say it's around two forty-seven or something like that.
It's, it's pretty good. I don't know if that includes the one ten or not from the sale of the property. It may or may not, but.
But either way.
Yeah, either way it's a lot.
Their fund balance is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six ninety-five.
And, and so like this year, they project, you know, they don't have anybody, so they probably have a surplus this year. Like they don't turn that money back to the board. They keep it.
Because they're reserves.
Right, it goes into their reserves. And so they do have some reserves built up. And I think if, if I remember correctly, when they were here the other day, that they had thought like if, if, you know, if they had to pay more for a director, they started coming out of the reserves and started pleading that. Then after a few years, they'd be able to determine whether it was worth it to fund it or not.
What the funds they have currently, not, not necessarily needing additional funding.
Well, it, so if they hire an economic development director, then I think the concern would be is they would not have, they would have to use their reserves to, to pay, to pay that salary. And I believe what they stated the other day was they're concerned about trying to recruit somebody, you know, only for a year or however, you know, long it takes before, a year or two before their reserves run out.
Well, at that time, we could, at that time, we could help it.
Sure. I mean, if, if let's say in the next twelve months, we've hired a director and we've hired admin and here's what our expenses are, and if we don't do, get any assistance, we're gonna exhaust our reserves and, and we don't have enough in our operating budget. That's a totally different statement than what we're having analyzed today.
They could pay a man two years.
With reserves?
With reserves before they needed another hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and twenty-four.
Well, and so if we were just to fund, you know, constant with what the board has funded their operating expenses, which is down a hundred thousand all the year.
A hundred thousand. And that, he already got the two hundred and sixty, seventy-seven thousand and you give him another hundred thousand, it'd probably take twenty, twenty-five thousand all the year from that to have to run that operation. You've got three years right there.
I believe by the time they, if, when the board releases the one hundred thousand dollars is budgeted for this year, then you can add a hundred thousand dollars to what they, to what they have. So it's just a matter of how, how many years they can operate with their reserves if they hire an economic development director.
I think you add the difference between their expenditures and a hundred thousand because they'll use that hundred thousand to pay for that this year. So there'll be a surplus this year after you give them a hundred thousand.
So I mean, and these actuals are, are from April and I'm sure there's, there's added expenses. I mean, we're, you know, adding to what they have stated. So I, I don't have any reason to think that those numbers aren't going to increase, but I don't know that they're gonna increase by sixty thousand dollars. Now that part may be a stretch. But I guess my position is I would be more willing to, to remain constant at what the board has funded TCDA. And if they can develop a plan forward that includes an executive director and that demonstrates what the, the needs are going to be in respect to future expenses, I think that would be a, a better path for. Cut the funding because I do think that they're, you know, that, and I, and I think they mentioned there might be some account issues as far as a grant that they got. And I'm glad they got their grant. I mean, hey, I won't never get grant funding that they're asking for or utilize that for advertising and such. But at the same time, I, I, I just don't see the, the, the demand for an increase when we're looking at a continuum of surplus.
I've had several people ask me were they doing what they were, what they bringing up the amount of money they were spending. I had that question a couple of times. You know, they were, you know, they were wondering where that money was going, you know.
Well, I, to me, I mean, I've had some of those questions, so I'm, I can relate. I'll say it that way. But I think if we, if we are able to maintain the funding at, at the budgeted amount and if they're able to, to formulate a plan forward that they've discussed, that, that includes an executive director, I think by having someone on staff, that you have an individual that, that can bring forth and report and, and help communicate some of the responsibility that I think our constituents are concerned about. So I'm not trying to undercut their efforts. I certainly want success at the TCDA. I think it's, would be a great thing. But given the revenues that they have available, I think they have some means to be moving in that direction.
If they get the bond, we can always work out somewhere to help them.
Sure.
You know, if they had somebody that was really producing and they needed more money to keep them, that would be one thing, you know.
I'd be in support of staying the hundred thousand dollars. I think the board would be willing to maybe additional funds, getting, getting progress forward, getting, and you do see. This should be a constant, they're working on it and they're able to just really, they're reporting back positive reporting on what the TCDA is doing and you can see, you know, some of their goals and what they're doing. So I think the board would probably be willing to release more by then. So I think right now, I think if I can just stay where we are. I got another question. Something different. So with the surplus in the general fund, the MSTU, I know this, I know it's reducing some because I've made, you know, made a few adjustments here. So that money will just go into reserves?
Unless that was a reduction. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, unless you budget something else, you know, between now and get done with the budget. But you still have time to do, so next Monday we're setting the.
The Monday we're setting the proposed millage.
So you will not be able to reduce or you will not be able to increase the millage at that point.
But you can reduce it.
You can reduce it, you can still reduce it and you could still, you know, modify things in your budget.
Up until the, the first public hearing. So at the first public hearing in September, we vote on the tentative village. So you can keep the miller rate the same. After you vote on the millage next week, it can either stay the same or go less. And then you'll vote on the tentative village at the first public hearing in September and vote on the budget that day. You can change it, the budget that day, but it can't be changed back for that day. We can make, you know, something happens and we discuss it and you make a change that day, I can change it. You're gonna have to advertise it in the paper that Friday and then we'll have the final hearing that following the date.
As, as far as those meetings, are those times set for the evening, morning?
Yes. The ones in September are set for five oh one. And. Because I have to set the dates around, I'll email them out because I have to set them around the school. And around the date of when the, when the values are certified. I have, there's so many days that you have to have the date Monday and then the first hearing and then when it has to be advertised, you have to count them out. And then Department of Revenue has to approve them. And so I've had to send the dates to them for approval and make sure it's all within the, the right timeline. And so I'll email them. I believe they're on Tuesdays. Normally they're on Mondays, but this year it's actually Tuesday because that first hearing that Monday would have failed before I could actually have the first hearing. So that first public hearing is actually on a Tuesday and they're both at five oh one.
Our next meeting is next Monday.
Is Monday at nine. At the proposed village.
It's thirty-first.
Yes.
And that'll be a quick one unless you've got changes or a bunch of things to discuss about the project.
Is that already advertised? Would that be at five or six time for thirty-first? I mean, if it's necessary for you guys to be at nine, I'm okay. I'm gonna just say if it can be at evening.
We did put it, I mean, it's on our website at, at.
We updated it. We have time to notice and not cause a problem. You'd be okay if we're in the evening next Monday.
Well, your, your next Monday meeting on the thirty-first, are you okay with that being like a five o'clock meeting or a five o'clock?
Why don't we meet in fact?
Sir?
We can do it.
And on that note, we have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday as tentative in case we couldn't get everything hashed out today, so we can cancel that, I'm assuming. Yes. So you want Monday's meeting to be at five?
If, if that's okay, stay out.
I'm over.
If it's gonna be a short meeting, I mean.
It should, I mean, it should be because you're just setting a proposed village.
That's prayer, my last one in the meeting.
I need, you can, you can throw it on me.
I do have one more informational item for the board. Some employees have approached me and asked if the board would consider changing our current sick time policy, which as of now does not include any payout of sick time when an employee separates with the county, only for annual leave. But I don't think I have enough information at this time to really come up with a true impact, especially with the board's agreement to change the hourly rates. But I, I mean, I, I will look at the numbers and update y'all. And what I'd like to do is survey the, the constitutional officers and see how each office handles the payout of sick time. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, I believe, the board made the decision not to pay out for sick time. And we do have some employees who have an excessive amount and are asking if the board would consider changing the policy, but I, I would not even ask you to consider that now unless I know what the impact is.
I mean, was it changed to that current condition? I mean, what constituted that?
Oh, I'm sure it was, but, well, I'm not sure. I'm assuming it was, it was a fiscal impact. Yes. So at that time, there were some employees who were grandfathered in. So if employees, current employees were hired prior to nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-nine, they do receive a payout of their sick leave. But all, all other employees, that time just rolls over every year. So we do have some employees who have an excess of twelve hundred hours of sick leave that unless they are, unless they're sick, that is not utilized. They cannot donate it to other employees. And I, and I know that we have a certain amount in reserves or budgeted for uncompensated absences, but I don't even know if that, how up to date that number is. And I'm concerned that, I mean, obviously I'm concerned if we already have some funds that are stretched, what kind of impact that would cause. But I really feel like I need to take a better look at the actual numbers before I even discuss it further. But I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that some employees are asking for that consideration.
And, and I think I mentioned that before because we, you know, we do budget some money for those compensated absences in, in anticipation that somebody's gonna leave and you're gonna have to pay something out every year. But I don't, those numbers have kind of been in the budget for a long time and I'm not really sure how, I think they just, it makes sense, I guess, whenever they put them in there, they, it's just always been the same amount. So it's not enough to cover everybody. You know, everybody's not gonna leave in the same year, but. So, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know if we want to increase that. You know, that might be something you could do with some of this surplus is maybe increase some of the reserves so that you know you got that money set aside. I can tell you that in my office, but I, when I became the clerk, there were no limits. And so all I did was we pay out everything, but we do have a, I'll only pay out seven thousand five hundred as a max and my employees know that. It's in our handbook. I believe the sheriff does the same thing, but his amount may be higher. So anyway, I, I chose to cap it at a certain amount of money and I tell my employees they need to use their time and keep it below that if they're planning on leaving or retiring because that's the max they're gonna get paid out.
I believe the board's is capped at four hundred and twenty hours and anything for annual leave and an employee who does not use their annual leave at the end of the fiscal year, anything over the four twenty, four eighty, I'm sorry, four eighty, I know it's close. The four eighty is, is lost. We, so it, it takes permission from the county administrator to give them time to earn that, to burn that additional leave and it has to be extenuating circumstances. So, so as of now, that four eighty is the cap. So we, we do have employees who have an excessive amount of leave who may work four days a week because they're, they're burning their annual leave because it's difficult for them to take off two weeks at a time and leave their departments unattended. But the sick leave is a little different animal because we don't allow employees to donate to other persons, which I think it differs by each department. So it, it is truly use it or lose it. And I think some of our employees have been looking at those large balances and feel like they would like to have some consideration. But I, I truly, initially when I looked at the numbers, assuming that all employees affected would receive the amount that was proposed to me, overall, spread across all funds, it was close to a hundred thousand dollars, which seems like a large number. So it may be that we need to look at other, at other offices and see what they do.
This, this is one of the things that I, that I didn't like about sick leave versus vacation time is that I had some people that were, they were always sick and didn't have very much sick time, sick time, but they had a lot of vacation time. And had a lot of, some people that were using their vacation time to be off and they had a lot of sick leave out of. And it seemed to me like we were rewarding the employee who was using all their sick leave and penalizing the employee who was not, never sick. To me, it seemed that way. And so, you know, that's, that was one of the, one of the things that I always had difficulty with that kind of sick leave versus, versus annual leave kind of thing. It just seemed like you were just kind of penalizing the people who were, because they, you know, pay out sick leave, but, you know, they're never sick, so, you know, they got much of it. And then the people who are sick are using theirs and they're getting paid for it. And so I, I never liked.
So ours is combined.
What's the sick leave base? You lose forty hours before you start getting a pay. Is that what it is?
I, I think, I mean, one can answer what yours is, but.
So you accumulate, so employees accumulate a certain amount and it may be eight hours a month, eight hours a month after, I believe, their six months. And that's something that just accumulates. If they don't use it, they don't lose it. It just continually banks. So there are some people, you know, who have in excess of five hundred up to over twelve hundred hours because they, you know, over a matter of twenty or thirty years, just haven't really used much sick time. So, and then we have other employees who, who use it as soon as they earn it. It just depends on the individual person. And, and then we also have a generous annual leave policy. So by the time someone banks an excess of sick time, they have annual leaves that they're trying to burn or they'll lose it because we cap it every year at the four eighty. So we have a very, very. So we have a very generous leave time policy.
Yeah.
But I think that the perception to employees is this is all, you know, because they've been, they've been faithful employees and they come to work, that they're losing all this time.
Yeah.
But that's really the way it was designed, that if you need it, it's there. And if you don't need it, it's, it's still there until you separate.
So if you got four hundred and eighty hours, you pay it at the base rate that he's making.
When they separate, yes. That's for, for annual leave. For sick leave.
Annual leave.
For sick leave, they do not receive any of their sick leave when they separate.
You don't get no money for that.
Not currently.
I thought I would put a wrong comment.
But what I can do is update, you know, update y'all when I get more information.
Change, is everyone do?
Some, some sort of payout on the sick.
Just the time.
I just, I mean, my, my experience in the different agencies is, is kind of use it or lose it. You've got so many hours and that's where it's at. So I, I mean, I see what you're saying, there's some imbalance because you, you feel like, hey, folks are trying to manage and do what they can with time and some kind, some kind of way does process not necessarily equal consideration with what I think I understand, however I do with it. But my experience has been, you know, that there is some carryover in respect to pay time off or annual leave, but in respect to sick leave, not at my expense. I haven't been paid for sick leave. If you didn't, if you don't use it during calendar.
Well, I keep.
And, and understanding where we're at with this fund, if you had a couple of others, you could be back in a really compromised place.
I realize that. And I believe employees will be thrilled with the consideration of the two dollar an hour increase. So I'm not saying our employees are disgruntled. I just, I just wanted to make you aware that I had been approached about this consideration. And, and I do have concerns of how we would actually manage that. But I will update the numbers and see what it really looks like and talk to the constitutional offices so we understand what's happening countywide. And that may shed some light on the, the reason for the request. But I think we need to compare annual leave and sick leave instead of, and not just focus on that one, on that one topic.
Well, if we discuss that, if there's more discussion about this topic, I'm more, I'm into it, but if not, I, I'd like to understand the, the mileage rate question, if we can, can discuss that before we. Is everybody good with the pay time off and sick leave?
Yeah.
I mean, before we wrap things up, unless there's another topic in respect to the, the surplus amount, understanding where we're at with our reserves, you know, I, I can't say that, that there's not gonna be something that, that comes up for this amount of, of four hundred thousand dollars. Understanding where we're at with the, the rate, is there any room to consider a minor rollback? I know it wouldn't be something that, that would constitute no issues, but understanding how healthy our reserves are, you know, I'm not just saying, hey, we won't have need for that amount because I, I just would like to understand.
I calculated, I'd have to recalculate it now that we've added a couple of things to this. But I calculated what the mileage rate could decrease if we cut it by four hundred thousand.
Right.
Um, and it would decrease the general fund mileage rate to seven point zero three eight zero, which is point two zero four six. So I mean, that would be, like, like I said, I would have to recalculate it because we've added the twenty-five thousand for the senior center and then sixty for emergency management. If I could recalculate really quick, if you want me to?
No, I mean, I don't have to have an exact amount. I, I'm just trying to look at.
So it would be.
Consideration, if, if it's something that is doable, is it something that, hey, oh, we may need this amount as far as that goes, or just wanted to try to understand what.
Did you say seven point oh three eight two?
So I think, you know, I think one thing is, just to be clear on terminology. So we're not talking about rollback, but rollback's something different to what we'd be talking about. Because rollback means you just, you're saving the millage to reduce the same thing, to produce the same amount of revenue you had last year.
Right, so no, it's, it's be a reduction.
They're just talking about like a reduction, a reduction in it to, you know, to cover the.
Offset for surplus.
Okay, so I think, and the other thing we could look at too, because I kind of looked at it quickly, so I don't, I don't want you to, I don't know if I really want to put these numbers out there, but, you know, we, we usually use an example of if someone has a hundred thousand dollar home and they get a fifty thousand dollar exemption, I think if a quarter of a mill, say, you know, like twelve dollars a year, I think. So that, it is the, so what happens is that the people who have the large amount of property are the ones that are really paying the money. The average taxpayer, you know, it's, it's really not a whole lot of money, not, that might not be something y'all want to do.
No, I mean, I was asked honestly.
We can look at that too, we can look at.
In respect to what the board was considering, the request was, you know, in, in respect to surplus and in respect to the needs and, and trying to live with the means. If it, if it just doesn't, you know, impact reach to folks in a way that's really conducive. I mean, I just want to understand, see if it makes sense to.
Man, you can look at reduce some of that and bring it back to Monday if you're interested in kind of seeing some of those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would not say those numbers are. Do you understand?
I mean, if they're in that meeting, somebody says, hey, this, this amount is, it's gonna be reduced some, and I understand that, but.
So if going from the current mileage rate in the general fund and if I did just like the four hundred thousand, which it would be a little less, to the mileage rate of what that would be, somebody with a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollar home and you have the exemptions and you pay it on fifty thousand dollars, they would have, it'd be ten dollars and twenty-three cents is what they would save, if you look at it like one day.
Is it about a quarter of a mill? How, how, what mileage?
It's point two, point two zero four six.
So it's, so it's about, so it's not quite a quarter of a mill?
No, it's lost. And so it would be a little less than that because.
The ones that would, that's just for someone that's homesteaders that have a hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, and they got the, and if they have fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Multiple property owners.
It'd be a lot more.
They'd save more, yeah.
Yeah. So I know you, what was the, what was the total increase, revenue increase from the property value assessment?
For both?
And then it was like one point five in the general one.
What, the revenue increase? So the general fund revenue increase is one point five and MSTU was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So the total revenue increase is gonna be a little more than that.
Uh, based off of the property value?
I'll keep the mileage rate the same.
The mileage rate now is seven point.
Um, and the general fund at seven point two four two six?
Seven point two four six.
Two four two six. And in the MSTU, it's one point two two five zero.
So you could reduce it to that and generate enough money to balance it and, and still generate enough money to balance what we've talked about in the, in the general.
All right.
And, you know, I mean, you know, the thing is, the thing we always worry about, we don't know what property value is gonna do next year. You know, I mean, I don't know, if it does seem like it's, at least the amount of sales are slowing down, I mean, the values don't really seem to be slowing down, but, you know, we don't know what next year is gonna generate and you can impose that quarter of a mill next year.
Because it will be advertised as a tax increase, you know.
Yeah, it's still gonna be advertised.
Even if I keep the mileage rate the same, it will be advertised as a tax increase.
Well, with that older reduction, it's, it's still constitutes that.
Both of the person whose values stayed the same, they would actually.
And regardless of what happens with the property values, we still have to address at the very least the dollar an hour minimum wage, the mandated minimum wage increase. So you have gotten closer to that fifteen dollars an hour, but I believe that will put us at.
Three dollars, put us at thirteen.
At thirteen. So we still have two more one dollar increases, but we have until twenty twenty-six to do that. So this does put us ahead, I will say.
Yeah, so if you did, if you did see where you wouldn't generate any additional revenue next year, you know, you might not be able to give anything next year. But you've given it this year, so you're a little bit ahead, so.
Does that may give us a little bit of additional time to address the, at least, at the very least, the minimum wage mandate.
I can't remember seeing revenue increases like this. I mean, I've seen some around a million, a million and a half. I don't think I've ever seen that I've been here, so.
That's all that happened.
I don't think I've seen that much larger increase since I've been here.
How long you been here?
Thirty years.
What, thirty years?
Yeah. We've seen a million before, but I don't, maybe we've never seen a million and a half. I don't remember if we did.
I can remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, is that a, uh, she was not here, but mentioned, mentioned that was, I mean, I asked the question. But that was a state mandate. Is that really state mandated or is that just a recommendation from the state?
You're talking about values?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, this is just my understanding of it, is that, um, the department of revenue, she submits the role to the department of revenue and they approve or, I think they give her guidelines and now I don't know. It's my understanding that she has all their guidelines.
Mr. Smart.
And that's based on comparable sales?
Right.
Right.
I, I would say I don't give prior, I'll be very good about it, just a recognition.
My last one more question, since everybody's here. We were planning to cancel the workshop for tomorrow night since any discussion, any items of discussion can wait until the August workshop. And I just want to make sure that we're still on, on, okay with that.
Probably let Mr. Pede on that.
Yes.
Oh, what's your?
As the topics were on, obviously.
That meeting tomorrow.
And no meeting Thursday.
No meeting Thursday.
All right. Another one we need to track out, I mean, I'm wearing a robe. Okay.
Monday, thirty-first, five p.m.
Eleven six, thirty-first, five o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. As long as it doesn't inconvenience somebody. Let's not take it one off.
Let's just kind of shuffle one around.
Wait, if you're asking them, hey. No, I think that's a good idea to.
I try to make it, if they have to vote.
Well, I just wanted to say that I, you know, I appreciate this board doing what you do. I appreciate you doing what you do for the employees and.
Yes, thank you.
You know, I appreciate what you do with the budget. I think you guys are understanding very well and take it seriously and, and work hard to make sure you do it the right way and I appreciate that. I just thank y'all for, you know, y'all just work on that and the considerations that you did and the decisions that you made, so. I appreciate you.
You all. That one of that I want, but for you, getting a good month.
That's right, that's right, you're kidding.
I'll even give him twenty-five. Inflation gives everybody. Okay.
I just, I appreciate what all you, you guys do and staff, because I mean, I think, you know, pretty good. Make this a little bit easier on, from what I hear, you're back with plenty of sessions just went on, but this is, you'll make this a lot easier for us to be able to look at the highlights. Our decisions are based off work, which I've already put together behind the scenes, so, uh, I do appreciate that for sure. That we're not up here in a mess trying to figure out where money is and what to do with money and, and short follow-up in your account, you know, so.
I will say I'm very grateful for the cooperative relationship we have, not only with our finance director, but with the clerk's office. It, I believe it makes the process much smoother. And Danielle is very patient with all of my phone calls and texts and all hours and days as thoughts come across my mind. But I do believe a lot of work is completed. You know, we try to get ahead of issues before it even comes to y'all and I think it makes the process a lot smoother. So I appreciate everyone.
All right, any other discussion?
Mark, you guys have it?
Sir.
Mark.
Mark.
Yeah, call.
Okay.
Answer, huh? We're in more of a discussion. A little here.
I'm open.
I guess we don't have that much of a brain then, so. Everybody do that, sir.